All right, so let's see, so we need to call to order. So Michael Cindy?
Here.
Ron Bloom?
Present.
Camilla Byrne, here. As far as a quorum, we do not have a quorum, but I am invoking a majority of a quorum tonight. So because we only have three people, which actually if we had a committee of nine people, actually, a majority of the quorum is only three, believe it or not. So anyway, so first of all, I want my public, let's see, the meeting starts at 7:30. Let's put that down. I'm wearing orange and black tonight because the Cubs are playing the San Francisco Giants. We're in our series. Go Giants. So just wanted to get that in. Old business. We have the meetings, the meeting minutes from 4:8:21. Is there any questions on this tome that I wrote? Tried to be very detailed, that was the lyric theater and all that kind of stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
All second.
Okay. Okay, new business. Howard, you want to introduce that?
So we're here tonight to hear a perspective text amendment for impervious coverage. This is something that I've been working on quietly internally with my rewrite of the zoning code, but someone beat me to the punch. It was Michael Cindy. He said, hey, you know, this is something we need to start looking at. So I was fine with, you know, working with him and creating a text amendment. He has a PowerPoint presentation as his zoning board member, he's going to present to the group on the need for an impervious coverage text amendment for stormwater, and I've included reduction of heat island effect, because that's also a concern in urban metropolis, urban metropolitan areas. So I'll give the floor to Michael Cindy.
You want to? Chris Walker?
Howard Norah.
Thank you.
All right, once again, as a lifelong resident of Blue Island, it's been an ongoing issue with localized flooding, and it seems as something that has increased in time, it increased recently, and as we look at the document I share with you, localized flooding is basically when flooding happens, a rainfall overwhelms the capacity of our drainage system. And if you look on pages two and three, you'll see some pictures of that localized flooding there in Blue Island, different parts of Blue Island, Northeast Corner. The slide number five, or on page three, is near 127th and Western. And as I mentioned, this something has increased in time, and that's according to climate.gov, that in 2009 they did a study, and they said the increase has to do with the intensity of global warming, okay? And as the surfaces heat up, and the hundred-year flood is no longer a hundred-year flood, it's coming more frequently, the hundred-year rain, and something that needs to be addressed. So we looked at that and said, well, what are cities doing, what are municipalities doing to address that flooding? And one thing they're looking at is trying to help with stormwater. And they're doing that in different ways, okay, doing that in different ways. One way that Blue Island has done that, Blue Island received a grant about eight years ago to address the Northeast Corner Town, 119th, 223rd, Western, the basically Ben Sands. And what they did is they did some green infrastructure up there and added a wetland to kind of help address flooding. Other municipalities are working on this as well. TARP, or the Deep Tunnel Project, has been working on since 1972. Basically, if you're not familiar with that, that would be a way to catch stormwater, and instead of flowing all over like Michigan, would flow to an area like the Thornton Quarry, right, to try to address that. Basically, because things are overwhelmed, right? There's so much water coming out at once, and there's nowhere to go, so you open up that deep tunnel. Other cities, like Berwind, got grants to address this. Burke Engineering, Robinson Engineering are all trying to address this, they're all civil engineers. So as we look at this, and we look at this, typically, most cities have an impervious or pervious definition. I put down two definitions down there that are done by different cities across the country. What I would like to do is I'd like the city of Blue Island to try to address this by come up with their own definition and adding that to our current zoning ordinance. And look at things that other cities are doing to address this. And one of those things is the idea of an impervious or pervious lot coverage. There you'll see some examples on page seven, eight, and nine of cities like Berwind, Bochlawn, Avonstan, Arlington Heights, Skokie, as well as other cities, that have limits on the amount of impervious lot coverage you can have. Right now, the city of Blue Island has a lot coverage requirement, okay, a lot coverage, but does not specify impervious or pervious. What I'd like to do is specify that, make it easier for homeowners to identify what they're doing in their lots, and more importantly, address the localized flooding issue in town. So this is not going to cure it, okay, this is not going to cure flooding, we know that, but it's just a small step in the right direction, okay? Most cities around us have it. I'd like to see Blue Island, as we update our ordinances from 1971, something more current, add this. The planning board did talk about it right before ours, and they did approve it to go forward to us.
All right, so last Friday, I emailed to the zoning board of appeals many documents, so I just want to go over some of the documents, so at least you have an understanding. So there is a memo, there is a memo which I talk about, basically about flat work, about the heat island effect, localized flooding. Then I also speak about two ordinances I'm proposing. The first ordinance is the one is, it has reference to amending ordinance 2151 and then ordinance 2012-185. This is the one I want everybody to focus on, because this is the one for planning and zoning. This is the ordinance for us. Then there's a secondary ordinance that I created, and this is for the city council to review. Basically, what it says is, "An ordinance amending Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulation, Construction Provisions of the Code of the Ordinance of the City of Blue Island." This is one that I'm going to propose to the city council. So if a person comes to the counter and says, hey, I want to build a new patio or new something, and I understand that, you know, you have this ordinance that says, if I use sustainable materials, and I'll read it in a moment, what a sustainable material is, then I could have a reduction or a waiver of my building permit fee. So then I also attached with that ordinance, I have a permit fee waiver application. So basically, if a person is proposing to do, I don't know, 50% of new material that's sustainable, then they could get a 50% reduction on their building permit. So how it works is, let's say the permit will cost you $200. If you do 50% of new impervious coverage, or impervious materials, pavement, flat work, let's say a patio, a driveway, then you get a 50% reduction on your permit, so you're paying 100 versus 200. The waiver is, if you're proposing 100%, everything that you're doing on the building permit with these sustainable materials, then we waive the fee, and you could go ahead and do it, we'll still review it. This is similar to the ordinance that we have in place, that was, I guess, voted by the city council two years ago to de-convert multifamilies to single families, right? There's an ordinance that says if a person buys a multifamily and wants to bring it up to a single-family standard, they're going to have to spend more money to do it, construction-wise. So the city says, we'll waive the fees. You know, the city, a building official have to keep a record and present that record in an annual manner to the city council. Maybe we got like four or five per year, or three, depends. So this kind of mimics that, you know, because this is like a step-one, step-two process. We're proposing an ordinance to tell people, hey, you can't cover your entire lot. However, if you do sustainable materials, then we'll even give you a reduction or a waiver. So I'm just going to read the section of the ordinance that's going to the city council. I'm just presenting for this group, just to look at it, and just to have an understanding where I'm going with this. But if you look on page, page four, the materials I'm talking about is porous asphalt, PA, pervious concrete, PC, permeable interlocking concrete pavers, PIC, and plastic red pavers, PGP. These would be the materials that would be calculated or incorporated with the reduction or waiver. Now, we had this discussion at the planning commission, right? If you're putting these types of material, they're going to allow for some water to seep back into the groundwater. We're still working out, Michael and I, and we're going to probably have to speak with the Robinson Engineering, about developing like a coefficient list. So if you're doing pervious pavers, it's maybe 85% impervious and 15% permeable, so that's the coefficient that we were talking about. Because even though you're using pervious pavement, right, there's still, water is still going to sheet off and go towards a different direction, but there'll be some seepage, and that would be the coefficient, would be like the 15% that would be absorbed into the ground. So we're still working on that, but that's for this ordinance, that's with the city council. Now, what I like to spend most of the time is the ordinance that it's in front of the planning and zoning. And keep in mind, for both, keep in mind that this one for the city, the waiver, is for R1, R1 zone, for a single multifamily, because some house, you know, some R1 lots have multifamily, but this is just for property owners, this is not for businesses, the waiver and reduction. Now, if we jump into the ordinance, 2151 and 2012-185, this is the one that we have tonight that we're looking at. So there are several sections. So the first section is revising adding new definitions. So I created a definition, it's called impervious coverage, and a secondary definition that is considered, it's called open space. Now, Jason Berry from the planning commission mentioned that the current zoning definitions section of the 1971 code does not even have a definition for lot coverage. So he would request that in this ordinance that goes to the city council, that we have a lot coverage ordinance. So there's a differentiation. Lot coverage is for, you know, the construction and the placement of a house, single family or multifamily, and let's say detached garage, that's your lot coverage. Impervious coverage would be your house, your detached garage, your walkway, your patio, your driveway, anything that covers the ground that's artificial, so even a swimming pool. Now, Jason and I, since we're both planners, most municipalities will also include decks. I chose not to include decks, because there is some seepage that goes through the deck ports into the ground, if there's no concrete pavement underneath it. Most decks are built with ground underneath it, so decks are not included. So section one just goes over the impervious, open space, and the third one would be lot coverage, which I'll have to come up with a definition. Section two is your table or schedule of bulk controls that you see in the 1971 code or zoning ordinance, right? So what I did in bold is this section that comes underneath lot coverage, maximum impervious coverage percentage. So I'll read it for each zone, so you have an idea. 60% for R1, C1, not applicable, C2, 90%, I1, 85%, I2, 85%, and LC, not applicable. I'd like to talk a little bit about this before I entertain any questions. So basically, what this says is 60% of your lot could be covered, which would include the 40%, right, from the buildings, principal building, house, single family, antillary building, your detached garage or shed, or something like that. So from 40 and 60, you have 20% extra that you could cover your ground with a driveway, with a walkway and all that. Now, keep in mind, not everybody builds their houses to 40%, if it's a house with an attached garage, or a house with a detached garage. But basically, that 60% means, 60% is what a person could cover on their property for a single family, R1 zone, right? Multifamilies are also included, because we have this quirkiness that we might have a two or three family in an R1 zone, right? That means 40% has to remain open, open to the elements, grass, dirt, rain garden, grasses, what have you. C1, not applicable, because that's a kind of a transition of the C2, C1, or UTOD, that's the one that already has, already have houses. Most of the houses, you know, pretty much covers the entire lot. This is the C1 zone that also allows for businesses with a driveway or parking lot. So it's kind of hard to do a percentage for this one, when it's a small percent of the lots under the C1 that would fall under this, so I said not applicable. C2, which would be your strip on Western Avenue and on 127th, Ashland, basically, your commercial property, right? 90% can be covered, 10% has to remain open. Keep in mind that we have chapter 163 that deals with landscaping, and that's the chapter that I'm enforcing. So when a person wants to do a redevelopment of their parking lot, they have to start incorporating landscaped islands and stuff like that. So it's kind of mimicking their percentage, it's either 5 or 10%. So I said, you know, at this point, 10% is the same like that. So basically, what I'm trying to do is get away from a property that's entirely covered, like let's say the Citgo gas station on Ashland in Vermont, that whole property is covered, there's no landscaping whatsoever. In the future, if they want to do a modification or something, I would be including this percentage. I'd say, well, you're going to have to have at least 10%. Usually, you see landscaping around the pole signs, the gas station signs, and stuff like that, so you start to get some open space. And then 85 for most of the industrial, I1 and I2, those are usually your warehouses, your parking lots, associated with the warehouse or manufacturing, that should have at least 15%. I'm also looking at, there might be a property that might get developed later on near 127th, that I'm going to, I would like to include this as a percentage of landscaping. And then LC is kind of your, like, your local open spaces, which we really don't use that anymore, that qualification, so that's why I said not applicable. So the stuff in bold is what you have right there, are the percentages for impervious coverage. Now, if you turn the page to section three of the ordinance, this is the table that the UTOD ordinance has, and theirs is called Table of Building Form Regulations. So I put it at the very bottom, kind of mimicking what they have for lot coverage and for impervious coverage, right? So if you look at the first one, it's the column mixed use. That's your, you know, a house or a building, let's say in Western Avenue, in the uptown area, that's pretty much paved, right? 90% would be allowed to be paved, 10% should be open. This is where I would start to require, when a person starts to do modifications to their properties, that they start incorporating this. Right now, I can't do anything about it if their whole lot is paved. Multifamily would be yours with more residents on a property, it could be an apartment building, or it could be row houses. You see row houses at 80%. And then single family, because we do allow for single family in the UTOD, that would be 60%, mimicking the R1 and the regular R1. And then 90% for commercial. I'm trying to mimic the commercial with chapter 163 that requires for parking lots, you need to start having more open space. The reason why that was incorporated was to start to have the property owner to start to absorb some of the stormwater, instead of being deflected off the street or in an underground chamber system that gets, you know, infiltrated back into the sewer combined water and sewer system, piping. And then section four, this is basically the variance part of it. What I put in bold is the new part of it. So when a person wants to apply for a yard or setback variance, let's say someone wants to put a fence in the front yard, right, they're going for a setback variance, 100% or 7.5 feet into it, that would be the section that we would be looking at as the zoning board of appeals for relief, right? So it's a yard or a setback. So what I did was I also put impervious coverage of 10% or less of the allowed impervious lot area. So the lot area for an R1 is 60, so if a person wants to do another 5% over 60, they would have to come to the zoning board for variance, for lot, for impervious coverage. So that's also part of the ordinance.
So it's 5%? I thought I heard 10%.
I'm just giving an example.
Oh, good.
Right. So for example, if a person says, oh, I want to do 20% of new impervious coverage, and I do the calculation, I say, sorry, but you're 20% over. You can apply for a variance for only 10%, but not for the other 10. There has to be a limit, because then a person could apply for a variance for everything to be covered. Then you're going to be put in a difficult situation where you start to set a precedent. If one property owner can do it, why can't the other? So 10%, I think, is fine, because that gets you up to 70% of a lot that's covered. And this would be on a case-by-case study, right? It depends on the lot. Like the planning commissioner said, David Brown, Eric Polcaster, even Jason Berry said, well, you know, a lot of these lots were developed in a different time period, houses are bigger and all that, you know, will this disqualify me? There is a possibility. But with this, you're given an opportunity to at least apply for a variance. And also opens the question, do you really want to keep your patio, or do you want to put a new swimming pool? And this is where there's going to have to be a give and take. And this usually happens in most of the communities that I've worked with.
Talking about above-ground pool.
Above-ground or in-ground pool, both.
You could put your pool on your cement patio.
Right. But for impervious coverage, a swimming pool will be included, because it captures water. And this is something that Jason Berry, who's the other planner who works in Lamont, this is something that we always get into discussions at the counter, at the front counter of an office. Yeah, water, a pool collects water, but eventually the water is going to start to overfill, start to go towards the side. So that water's not going into the ground, that's already covering the ground. So it's kind of like a patio, right? Enough water sits on the patio, then it starts to infiltrate towards the side. The swimming pool, above-ground or in-ground pool, will be considered the same for impervious coverage.
And this will help, you know, your neighbor decides to do something, and your neighbor's lot is an inch or two higher, where does that water go? What's going to flow into your lot?
Right.
This at least gives us something to kind of address that.
Offset that.
Right? And most importantly, keep the water out of the sewer system. You know, that's just an issue that older communities have, and, you know, as global warming happens, it becomes more of an issue.
So and then section five, just, you know, is the typical verbiage, you know, this ordinance will now supersede the older ordinances, in other words, we're going to, this is going to be in effect. I can't tell a person, you know, you need to remove that, it depends. If a person's doing a flat work application, and they want to pave their whole rear lot, today, I can't tell the person, no, you can't do that, I have nothing to hang my hat. Now, if I see that this might be a problem, I would request the applicant to, you know, contact the neighbors, and let's have a meeting, and let's try and work out a solution. That's the only thing I could do today. If someone wants to cover their whole rear lot and do, let's say, 90% impervious coverage under rear lot, or for the whole property. Now, some municipalities goes even a step further, they'll look at impervious coverage in the front yard and the rear yard, like in Park Ridge, which both of us noticed, you know, 50% of that could only be covered. So we're not going to that extreme, we're just talking about the whole lot in general. So this is the ordinance. So I created the ordinance, and I have, I already, you know, mentioned to the attorney in Montana Welch, that this is just a draft ordinance, there might be changes from the planning and zoning. For example, planning says, hey, you should also include lot coverage, so this is going to change. Now it's up to us, as part of the zoning board of appeals, under the majority of a quorum, to say, well, I think, Howard, 60% is a little bit too restrictive, maybe it should be 50% or 70%. You know, this is where I like to get feedback from the three of us.
And my information, just to give us more background knowledge of why I think it's needed, you know, that's all my information is, is saying, listen, we're not the only ones doing this. Other cities are doing this, they've been doing it for a while, and, you know, just a small step in the direction to address localized flooding.
Now, to clear this up for the people watching us on TV, on YouTube, Michael Cindy was the one that proposed it, but I am, you know, an agent of the city, I'm a public municipal employee, I'm the one that's submitting this in front of the city council. So he's going to vote for it as a zoning board member, he was the one that proposed it, but this is the ordinance that I've worked on, you know, working alone, working on this, so there was no assistance with the technical aspects, so he really had no influence. His influence was the PowerPoint presentation and proposing to Howard, Howard, let's start looking at impervious coverage, can this be brought to the planning and zoning, to have a discussion, to have a text amendment, to start being debated and maybe be approved. So any questions, concerns, suggestions?
A couple of questions, actually, that I have. So in the minutes, for example, there isn't a site for ordinances, proposed ordinances. It just basically says to modify the thinking. So are we voting to modify, or are we voting for the ordinance?
Well, you're voting for the ordinance. You're allowed to put conditions in the agenda, right? You're talking about the agenda, what was advertised. What the state says is, I have to notice to the public, both in the newspaper, 15 days before a meeting, at least, 48 hours in a regular agenda, there is an ordinance that's being proposed. So the ordinance is here. Just like with your variances, you guys put conditions, you know, that doesn't negate the voting of the ordinance. So the lot coverage, I'll put it in, that's going to be one of the, you know, one of the permutations or one of the additions to the text amendment, but we're allowed to, you know, change it, and we could vote on it. Now, if I said, we're just having a discussion, and let's say Michael Cindy says, hey, I'm good, let's vote for it, then we can't vote for it, because it was never properly advertised for voting.
Right. That's my question.
Right. It's a text amendment. It's been listed.
So it has been properly modified, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Right, the modification, but not the ordinance itself.
No, the ordinance, the modification is the text amendment, we're modifying the zoning code. This is an amendment to the code, so it's a modification.
Right. I understand that.
Right.
But again, the ordinance is not on this agenda, it's just a point. Usually, when you're voting for an ordinance, you have it on the agenda.
So we'll review the applicant's request for an impervious coverage text amendment, so I'm calling it a text amendment, it's right here in the agenda.
Right, I don't disagree with that, but the thing is, it's got, it's been assigned an ordinance.
There's no ordinance, we're creating the ordinance to go to the city council.
Oh, okay, okay, because I thought we had, there was an ordinance number that's been assigned to it.
No.
No, we don't create that, they, we just recommend it, and they go through and approve it.
So the ordinance number is 2021-XXX, is whatever we get on the docket.
Okay, so to become an ordinance.
Right, to become an ordinance. So I listed ordinance 2151 and ordinance 2012-185, those are the two ordinance that we're modifying with this text amendment. So the first one is the 1971 code, and the second one, the 2012, is the UTOD ordinance. So this is an ordinance to modify, amend with this text amendment. So since this is a planning and zoning component, we have to go through the planning and zoning. Now, the second ordinance, which has nothing to do with planning and zoning, right, is the ordinance that's just going to the, is going to the building department, that doesn't require planning and zoning, because it's a building issue, it's a building code, that's going to be an ordinance that's going to be modified at the city council with chapter 150. So I listed chapter 150 and the sections that modifies that. And I also provided the provision subsections A through L that goes with everything that was discussed, or I kind of summarized with this ordinance. You know, a person's applying for a building permit, they're going to have to have a preliminary review, they're going to have to fill out that secondary form that says, yeah, I'm interested in doing a 50% reduction on my permit fee if I do one of these permeable pavement materials. And then it talks about, you know, the final inspection, the rough inspection, and then it talks about, you know, a permit, you know, it needs to be completed within 12 months and all that. That's all under building code, but it has nothing to do with planning and zoning. I just presented it to the group to say, hey, this is step one, there's a step two, we're also given an incentive to use these types of materials.
Okay, so then what are we voting on?
On the text amendment.
That's in the agenda.
Yeah. That's- Yeah. That's in the agenda, sorry. Right.
I know that that's an odd question.
No, 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 it's great. No, I mean, I'd rather dot the i's and cross the t's.
Because we're talking about an ordinance, but we're not talking about an ordinance in the agenda. So, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, just the, the, the.
Right. It, it basically says, we're, we're looking at, you know, reviewing an impervious text amendment. It's similar to Aphelia. I'm using the same language with, with Aphelia. It was a text amendment to add a definition for a banquet hall and a special use.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
But you've been talking about an ordinance, you know, your ordinances and so...
Right, because I'm thinking already of the big picture, city council.
Right, right, right. But that's, that's just my...
Right, because now we have a...
We should be presenting an ordinance. We should be presenting the text amendment.
Right, but, but the text amendment is this ordinance. I already went a step further. Instead of writing a staff report that says, "Oh, I suggest that we should do this, this, and that", I already created the ordinance. So, now, our attorney is going to say, "Okay, Howard, I'm looking at your ordinance. I might have to revise it for legal purposes, but they're going to probably use the ordinance that we're looking at." So, I'm doing the draft.
Right. I, I hear you. So, but to me, those are still two different things. So, I can vote on the modification to modify, you know, according to the agenda, but I, I'm not necessarily voting for that ordinance.
Well...
We don't vote on your ordinance. That goes in the county board.
Right. You're recommending for a city council to approve.
Right, but what we're doing, though, is we're also, we're recommending, again...
You're recommending this document that I put together.
Right. That's what I'm suggesting.
This is your text amendment.
Right. I know. But, but like, the amendments are not cited in our agenda. That's my problem.
It's cited as text amendment.
It is a text amendment, but we're, but I'm not voting for an ordinance. I'm not voting for an ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, I went a step further. I created a text, a text amendment ordinance is right here.
I know, but it, it goes into much more detail than what we said here.
Right. And I looked at past precedents, and this is what was proposed by my predecessor, Jason Berry, with something similar, that's in the zoning code that spoke about transitional housing and all that. So, I looked at past precedents, and how things were submitted. I just, okay, he created an ordinance. I created an ordinance. It's pretty simple, which is your text amendment.
I don't mean to be disruptive here, but usually, it's just, you know, it's, we've got a text amendment, and we're also including it in this, in this specific ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Right.
So, and, and the, the ordinance goes, you know, beyond what we're, you know, what we're seeing in the agenda. I'm for it. I'm not against it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But this is your text amendment.
Right. I'm just, I'm just looking at, you know, how it's been presented.
Right.
So...
So, this is your text amendment. See, with Aphelia, they presented their information. I created a staff report. I said, "Otleson and Stur, Carrie Horvath, create the ordinance." Here, since I am the person creating this, I already did it. I'm not recommending to the attorney, "Here are my findings. Please put this in an ordinance." I already created it.
Right. They usually create it.
Right. They usually create it, but in this one, as the planner, it's my responsibility to show the attorneys, "These are the sections that I would like for legal to review before it goes to city council." Yes, I could have put it on a staff report, but I chose to do the, the document itself. So, at least now, we have a real document to look at.
Right. But they may still create it in their own...
Right. They could create it. They could junk it.
Yeah, they may modify it.
Yeah. They could junk it. I don't, I don't, no, no hurt feelings.
So, for what we know today, as far as I'm concerned, again, I'm for this. You know, I, I was glad, number one, I was glad somebody came forward. We've been talking about this flooding issue forever. And I'm like, "Okay, we've had this problem forever. Why isn't somebody coming forth with a proposal?"
He beat me to the punch.
A recommendation, something more formal. So, when you came forth, I was like, "Yay." And to be on our zoning committee on top of it was like, not only are we accommodating the applications and the appeals that come through, we're also acting in a proactive perspective for us.
That's the whole goal, right, is to act proactively with this?
I think we should do that.
Yes.
We shouldn't just be, you know, sitting back and being, you know, not active. We should be proactive.
Yeah, that's a goal. I think that's the goal. I think, and I applaud you for, for saying that, because you're right. I mean, we could just sit here and take applicants, right? And then say yes or no from an applicant, or say, "No, you don't follow this." But if we want to help the residents of Blue Island, which, you know, that's our...
We see what's going on.
We see what's going on. We see that our neighbors that are dealing with flooding issues. We see that our family members deal with flooding issues. So, what can we do? What research can we do to identify ways to address it? I've done a little bit of research. Howard's done some research from other cities, and say, "Look, here's one way to have a, a positive step to address it."
Yeah, I totally agree. I wish we had more of our residents here who could also appreciate and understand, you know, what we're about to, you know, recommend.
Yeah. And the work that goes into it.
Yeah. Well, not only that, but just, we hear you.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we want to address this. What are your comments? Do you have any suggestions? Do you have any concerns? So, we have one resident. Do you have any concerns or... Good, thanks.
Thank you.
So, so, getting back to Kimberly's question, if you look at page 2 of this ordinance, I do cite the, you know, zoning code text amendment for impervious coverage. So, the language is there. It's not, I never mentioned it. It's, it's mentioned in the introduction, under the whereas, you know, I, I said, "We're having a public meeting. Zoning board is the recommending body to the city council. We're having our meeting at 7:30. Text amendment for impervious coverage." I did the newspaper advertisement, 30 and 15 days. Proper notice was, you know, for the zoning board of appeals was placed for the Open Meetings Act. And then, you know, this, you know, to be presented to the mayor and to the city council as an ordinance. And then I did everything else. I could have created a staff report. It would have been fine. But I, I thought it was just better just to create the ordinance myself and let legal look at it.
Was the ordinance in public, put out in public via?
Yes.
It was?
Yes. So, if, if you look at the staff report, I, I go into details about, there is, I don't have my staff report here, but in those numerous papers, I provided a copy of the public notice in the newspaper for the planning and zoning. And in the public notice in the newspaper, I say that a physical copy is available at the building department, which is at the counter. It was open to the public to view it, or to speak with Howard, give me a call, give me any, send me an email to, but I never received any comment or feedback.
Right.
Right. And a zoning sign was placed in front of City Hall.
Okay. I, I know that we go through the proper procedure. I just, from the ordinance perspective, I just wanted to, the proposed ordinance.
Yes.
To make sure it was in, in the public domain, so...
Right. Down the road, I would like to at least, you know, post like, you know, this kind of material on the city's website, but I have to speak with the city clerk, because this is the city clerk's domain. I don't want to step toes. So, I'm just, you know, it should, you know...
That would be nice as well, because it's, you know, for those who can't get out and more of those who don't read the newspaper or whatever.
Right, right.
Just gives them a round.
It does.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, I, I've just got a couple of comments and questions. First of all, thank you for that question, because we always want to make sure from an agenda perspective that we are covering the items that have been published. We want to make sure that, very clear about what's going to be discussed and what actions are to be taken. And, and in reviewing, in reviewing the agenda as well, I had similar questions relative to the purpose for tonight regarding the ordinance reference for demonstration and discussion only, as opposed to voting per se. Again, I, I commend Commissioner Cindy for doing all the legwork and pulling all this together. I thought somewhere in here, there was a reference to the increase in building permits for flat work. And I, I thought that was interesting in and of itself, in terms of, you know, the level of activity that's taking place. So, I, I, I thought the, you know, the next steps in researching this, recognizing the issues that we have in town, looking at what can be done to help mitigate future issues, is very forward-looking. So, thank you for all the work on that. The only question that I had, and, and again, I'm supportive of it as well, relative to the incentives for using permeable materials, is this something that we're envisioning will be for an extended period of time to, to get people to use it? Or do we envision a time where we say, "This is the only kind of material that we will allow" from that perspective? I mean, I think it's always good to give incentives. And, again, in reviewing the information, and Howard, thank you for all the work that you've done and the explanation, there's a good basis for, you know, comparing what's being done in other areas, you know, and what's worked and what hasn't worked. And I think that that's a great benefit to, you know, taking these steps to help our community.
So, before I, I answer your question about, you know, temporary versus permanent, waivers and reduction, I would also like to also highlight the memo that I drafted. This memo kind of acts like a very short, one-page staff report, where I go into the details. I say, you know, and this is just for the public recollection that, you know, I read it right here. In, you know, the second-to-last paragraph, I say, "In conjunction to the text amendment, Mr. Kupari has created an ordinance that revises Chapter 150." So, I, I talk about the Chapter 150, and I also talk about the text amendment for impervious coverage. So, it's, it's here. It's, it's hard. I, I thought it was just easier just to create the text amendment, just present it to the attorney, instead of saying, "Okay, these are the definitions. You know, you plug it in, and you do everything." I was looking at, I actually have the ordinance here. I'll read it for the public. Ordinance 2015-029. This was an ordinance to modify the zoning code that dealt with assisted living and community home and dwelling units and stuff like that. So, my predecessor, Mr. Berry, drafted the ordinance, provided his findings of fact, which I have here also, which I provided, and then a recommendation letter. The recommendation letter is going to be to the, to the city council. But there was no staff report in this, in this ordinance. It was the creation of the, of the ordinance. I'm not sure if Mr. Berry created the ordinance himself, or he had assistance with the attorney. I, I just mimicked an example of a text amendment that was done in-house by the city, because this is a very unique situation. And I said, "Okay, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious. You know, all the sections talk about the sections that are going to be revised." So, I did the same thing here. I, I kind of created a similar document, thinking nothing of it, you know. For me, the ordinance is the text amendment. I could see on your side how it's a little different.
Well, I think, and I appreciate what you're doing. You are trying to, you know, make sure that this, you know, it's simple for everyone. I know, I know how you do things. And so, so I greatly appreciate that. But I would recommend going forward that you not create the ordinance. That's not really your role. Yours is to recommend and to, you know, list the, you know, what you believe needs to be considered, and then the attorneys then take it and then wrap it into an ordinance that, and with other things that they put in there. So, just, just a suggestion. I'm, I think it's, you know, for me, I love efficiency, especially from the experts who know what they're doing. You hand it over to the attorneys, and they're going to kind of wrap it however they wrap it from a legal perspective, that may not be so knowledgeable about what they're really looking at. So, I'm just that comment. No disparaging, but just, it's not typical that, that that happens. So, just saying. So, I'm voting, I would vote on the modification, but I'm not voting on the ordinance.
Do you have a recommendation to vote?
Yeah, I was just, I was waiting for, does anybody have any other questions or comments? Okay. So, can I get a motion to, to agree to accept the existing table of form, let's see, to modify the existing table of building form regulations in the Uptown Transit Oriented Development, UTOD District Ordinance 2012?
So, what I would recommend is you list each section under modification that you want the city council to review, for the attorney to draft. So, I would start, Section 1, I would like for the definitions to be approved. Section 2, the bulk requirement to be changed.
Okay. Unfortunately, that's not in my agenda to, to recommend. So, that's, that's where I, I'm, I'm short on this. So...
It's here.
Yeah, I, they are just differing opinions in terms of how the agenda was written. I think it's, information's available to the public. The planning board approved it, pushed it towards us. Now, it's our option to either table it or send it forward to city council. We just recommend them for to review it.
Right.
They're the ones that are going to review this, not us. And I guess I'll make a motion to approve it as written and put the city council to review it.
Can I get a second?
I, I mean, I guess if that, just from a generic nature, if that is sufficient, I don't know if we need to be more specific what it is.
Yeah, I mean, the text amendment, right?
It's a text amendment.
The text amendment, you know? I make a motion to, you know, approve the text amendment and have the city council review it. You know, we just recommend for them to review it.
So, what I would suggest is approve the text amendment, i.e., this is an example of the text amendment that the city...
It shouldn't be example. It should be what we're proposing.
Well, it's there. It's in, it's in the physical document.
Right. So, we kind of want to put it forth as an example. Put it forth as, this is what we're proposing.
This document.
The document?
What do you want to call it?
What do you want to call it?
I call it an ordinance text amendment.
Text amendment.
Okay. So, it's a text amendment?
Yeah.
Not an ordinance. It's a text amendment?
Text amendment.
Right. Okay.
It's just in the form of an ordinance.
Right.
Because in the introduction, the whereas, I, in the whereas section, I talk about, I say, "It's, you know, a consideration for a zoning code text amendment for impervious coverage." So, I state the fact.
Right. Okay.
So, then I, she, I recommend that we approve the text amendment as proposed?
As proposed.
As proposed. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, that's your motion?
Yeah, please.
Second? Second?
Um, I will second.
Well, yeah, it needs to be, for example, it doesn't say it's a text amendment here. It just says, "We're modifying things." So... So, I just, I hate to be nit, 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 nit. I'm just saying, this is a public body, and we're approving something that should follow the agenda, and it just needs to be specific. So, I'm just saying. Okay. So, motion carried then.
So, we, now, we vote on it?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We vote on it. So, I made a motion. You second it. So, now, we vote on it.
Right. So...
Do we roll call, or you want to?
So, Michael Cindy?
Yes.
All right.
You're the one.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else on the agenda?
Board members' concerns.
Yes.
That's your concern. I guess that would be your concern, yes. Yeah, that would be, I guess, the time to address that, yeah.
Howard, you're, you're so meticulous with your, all this information that you normally put forward. I think in this one, it was not as, it was just not as, I know that you created all the other documents and that sort of thing, but usually, you know, you've got to go off of what's in the agenda. This is what you're approving and what you're reviewing specifically. So, just, make a recommendation. Go back to what you normally do.
My staff report?
Your staff report? Okay. So, are there any concern, other concerns, considerations? I wanted to just make one comment. It's not a concern, but I'm actually very excited that we're actually in person again, even though we're still under, although I think Phase 5 actually is being pushed through. So, I can't say we're still under COVID conditions, although we still are. But I'm very glad to be back out into the public and see people's faces and shake their hands, if they'll allow me to.
Yes, it's great.
So, I can say, welcome back to our normal standards.
I want to compliment Howard's work with going through with this. I mean, it's a lot of work to look at this type of stuff and, and, you know, taking the lead on this, the initiative on this, is something that hopefully will benefit residents of Blue Island. Right? That's the whole goal of this, is, is we talk about being proactive. That's the whole goal of this, somehow being proactive.
It's not, it's not simple to make changes. It's not, it's not simple to make change.
How long have you been in Blue Island? Longer than I have, right? Quarter of a year. Flooding's been an issue, right? I've been here 43 years and flooding's an issue. This is just a small step to address it.
Yeah, and, and one of the challenges that I see with this is it's for things that are going forward. So my question is, and I like what Ron had to say, which is, you know, not only how do we change some of the thinking going forward, and sometimes it's baby steps, but, you know, how do we reach the point where we're actually saying, these are the only materials you can build with going forward?
Yeah, that's a tricky, tricky spot because then you're looking at cost and all that, things like that. I mean, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
But it's definitely something to look into, right?
Yeah, but also in time. The more people that use it, the more the costs go down. And so it is, you know, a gradual, so we're making a baby step right now. But, you know, eventually as costs go down and it becomes more acceptable and, you know, as a, as a tool to help our city, then it's.
Same concept with electric cars, right? As the cost of, electric cars go down, more and more people buy them, and they bring the, the fuel down. If it's around, people want to go, et cetera. But you're right, I agree that maybe at some point, at some point, we get to.
Great. And I also just want to make sure it's very, very clear, because I, I kind of put it in the agenda when we were kind of drafting things, that it is for going forward. And also it's clear on just when it applies. So in other words, if somebody's, I heard something earlier, maybe in the planning, where if you've got a drive, if, you know, if you're replacing a driveway, it's already there. You know, I, I don't totally agree that, you know, just because you had a driveway up there before.
You're not entitled to it.
You want, you're, you're entitled to just keep it the way it is. You're just, you know, maintaining it in its worst condition.
Right.
So I, I don't, I, that's kind of where my baby step takes a little, little more.
Right, but if a person is removing and repaving, then we're going to have to enforce the new code. So that driveway that maybe they got away 30 years ago might not apply anymore.
So if they're just, you know, putting a slurry on top of it, that's not necessarily replacing it.
Right.
It's just maintaining it.
Yeah, maintaining it, yeah, I would.
So again, I, I think some of this distinction really needs to be carved a little bit.
Right.
The building department will do that, because that's the building department's role.
Right, you see, it's just like when a person, you know, comes to the building department, applies for resealing, recoding a parking lot. You know, they're, they're redoing the parking lot, they're redoing the striping. It's existing. Now, if they decide to pave more area and add more parking spaces, then this would trigger it.
Sure, sure.
You know, one of the things that we talked about when I was on the planning committee, and it, it equally applies on zoning as well, and that's just educating the public and building awareness. You know, I mean, if you're a contractor and you're used to working with the building department and going through that, that's one thing. But, you know, many, many homeowners aren't, right? It's the first time that you're dealing with some of this. So how can we put together a program or some kind of information so that, you know, the, the homeowners have a better idea of what to expect when they're thinking about these projects and what the building department is there for? And how it works? I think really would help kind of drive, kind of where are we going as well in terms of building awareness and education of the, you know, the importance of thinking along these lines as, as well.
Right, so I, I had this conversation with the former chairman of the planning commission, Mark Petosca. I'm already, you know, in the process of creating some literature for the planning and zoning. You know, what is a variance? How do you go through a variance process? What is a special use? So, I was recently, I was recently given responsibility of the building department once again on a temporary basis. So I'm more interactive now with the building department than, let's say, a month ago. So I'm also looking at, you know, improving the efficiency of the, the building department. The building department is very short-staffed, so I'm, I'm doing code enforcement also. So, yes, to get back to your, yes, this was a very strange application. I'm doing the best that I can with the limited hours I have now for planning and zoning issues. My responsibility now is property maintenance and helping the building official get out building permits, so.
So to that point, however.
Yes.
So one of the things that, that, you know, I work in business and I work in business transformation. One of the things that I see in businesses all the time is ambiguous language. So from an interpretation standpoint, that's why I kind of emphasize, you know, making sure that it's very clear. But it's not only just very clear in the code, it's also got to be interpreted. And what I, what I am trying to say is basically, a building department person who may or may not be as knowledgeable, but they're there to help and serve the public, if it's interpretive, you know, you're going to get bad results.
Right.
So that's also my point. It needs to be clear enough.
In situations like this, the building official is pitching it to me to answer these types of questions. So I'm already answering them when it comes to variances, special uses, business development grant program, business license applications, parking. Now, impervious coverage is going to be another responsibility because now I'm the one that's going to start doing the calculations when they're coming in. Because a homeowner will not be aware of it. I could get maybe an architect or an engineer to do it if they're doing a new project.
Right, they're more knowledgeable.
Right. But a homeowner, I'm going to have to sit there with the survey and start doing it.
Right. So that's, again, the more clear it is, the easier it is to enforce.
Yeah.
The easier it is to explain, you know, and all that sort of stuff. Are there any other comments or suggestions or? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I agree. Motion is, meeting is adjourned.
Time.
Again, Howard, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.